Good evening, my name is Zara Roach and I would like to welcome you to the Pasco Planning Commission. The purpose of the Planning Commission meeting is to conduct workshop meetings and public hearings on land use, development requests and other selected City of Pasco planning activities. To perform our duties, the Planning Commission obtains public testimony, gathers and analyzes information, make recommendations to the Pasco City Council based on what we think would be in the best interest of the city. The City Council takes the record and facts and findings that we create together with our recommendations and make the final decision on all matters. So to begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerks to take role, please. Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Joseph Campos.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myram.
Present.
Zara Roach.
Present.
Pam Byconan.
Present.
There's six present, we have a quorum. Thank you, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on PSC Channel 191 on Charter Cable and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. I would like to ask you to turn off your cellphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. This meeting is being recorded and you can watch it on Pasco, City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and you will make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back corner of this table and you may follow along with the meeting. For those present this evening when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please come forward to the podium, please speak your name clearly into the microphone, state your name and address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires that public meetings and hearings like the one being held this evening not only be fair but also appear to be fair. Washington State law prohibits members of the Planning Commission from communicating with members of the public concerning the subject of a public hearing outside the public hearing meeting. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in a hearing or a decision in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. So first, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration regarding any of the agenda items? No, let their show that there are none. Second, is there anyone in the audience who would object to a Planning Commissioner hearing any of the items on the agenda? Okay, let the record show that there are none. Ladies and gentlemen, we value your input and we need it as it helps us to understand the issues more clearly, to make better recommendations to the City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the public record that the City Council then uses to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. Washington State law requires testimony given in a meeting like this be given under an oath or an affirmation of truth. Therefore, before we go any further, I would like to ask that all individuals who plan to speak at tonight's meeting be sworn in. So even if you think you might want to say something, it's easier to do it this time because we do a group swearing, so if you are here to speak, stand up, raise your right hand and I will proceed. Do each of you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give? If so, please answer, "I do."
I do.
Thank you, you may be seated. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the April meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the Commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved?
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Myram.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Abel Campos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show that it passed unanimously and then that brings us to Old Business, which is item five on our agenda. The first item is A, a preliminary plat Black Bell Estates, Master File PP 2019-001. And staff, if you have any further comments on this, that would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff does not have any further comments for this application unless anyone on the commission has any questions.
Thank you, Darcy. Are there any Commissioners at this time who have additional questions or clarifications that they need from staff on this item? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt findings of facts and conclusions therefrom as contained in the May 16, 2019 staff report. Second.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Byconan and it was passed unanimously. What happens to this item? Next.
Yeah, one more motion.
Oh, excuse me, one more motion, go for it.
I move based on the findings of fact and conclusions as adopted, the Planning Commission recommend the City Council approve the preliminary plat for Black Bell Estates with conditions as listed in the May 16, 2019 staff report.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I think I got it this time. So, moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Byconan and the motion passed unanimously. What will happen to this item, please?
This item will go to the first regular council meeting in June.
Thank you, Darcy. And that brings us to item B, a rezone from C1 to C3, Master File Z 2019-004. And I'm going to hand it back over to staff to give us any additional information.
Thank you, Chairwoman Roach. This was a rezone request from C1 zoning to C3 for roughly three acres located in the northwest corner of Road 84 and Chapel Hill Boulevard. If the Commission recalls the conversation last month, there was considerable discussion about a concomitant agreement that would accompany this to weed out some of the heavier C3 uses and make it compatible with the zoning in the immediate area. And although this is a little unusual, and I'm not asking the Commission to open this for additional testimony since the hearing was closed, the applicants may wish to make a request for a continuation? No?
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay.
So, you have in front of you the concomitant agreement and the recommendations of staff and be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Okay, thank you. And are there any clarifications? Yes?
Yeah, thank you. I recall last meeting that there was a little bit disparity between some of the uses mentioned in the concomitant agreement. Has all the parties kind of come to some consensus on that and on the same page?
It seems that that has occurred.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments about this item?
No comment.
No, the public hearing is closed? Sure, okay.
That was my reference mentioning about this, sorry.
Go for it.
I believe that's why Commissioner White was talking about having the continuation. If there's anything you'd like to discuss, you can ask for a continuation and discuss it with this.
And the reason I said that was because if there is enough disagreement or contention about a particular use or uses in the concomitant agreement, staff would be required to re-advertise this item for a public hearing. And so, the additional month continuation would allow us to do that and meet with the applicant owner, but again, I'm not sure they want that to occur.
So this is probably the, if you would like a continuation and we can discuss the concomitant agreement at length, it would push out the...
We don't want to do a continuation. We're fine with moving forward with this as is and then we can work on some other things and bring this up in the future to amend this downwind.
Okay, great. Alright, thank you. So, any other discussion amongst Commissioners that we need to have about any of the concomitant agreement items? Nope? Okay, otherwise, I would entertain a motion and this time I will be prepared for two motions.
I move to close the hearing and adopt findings of fact and conclusions therefrom as contained in the May 16, 2019 staff report.
Okay, so I'll give that to, we've got two Camposes, so, alright, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so let's, no, I'm going to let you go ahead, Abel.
I move based on the findings of fact and conclusions as adopted by the Planning Commission, recommend the City Council rezone the parcel from C1 retail business to C3 general business with a concomitant agreement limiting the uses to those found in the C1 zoning district with the addition of macro breweries and adding the conditions pertaining to design standards.
Second.
Okay, so let the record show, or all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, let the record show it was moved by A, Campos, seconded by Commissioner Myram and B, motion passed.
Could you clarify who seconded the first motion?
That was seconded by J Campos.
Okay.
Okay. Is that okay if I just give you your initials?
Yes.
Is that alright with you guys? Or should I say the whole name? I'd like to clarify that too. And then what happens to this item?
This item goes to City Council at the first council meeting in June.
Okay.
And this, and by the way, rezones from here on out will go to the hearing examiner and directly to council, so the timeframe will be drastically shortened along with the timeframe for special permits and conditional use permits.
Okay, thank you for that update. And that brings us to our public hearing portion. So that is item six on the agenda and the first item is a special permit location of Franklin County Museum Annex Building, Master File SP 2019-002. And this is continued from a previous meeting, so we'll let staff reintroduce us to this item.
Good evening, Commission members. This item was continued from the April 2019 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant, the Franklin County Historical Society, has applied for a special permit to build a, or construct a museum annex to the east of the existing annex located on the corner of Fourth and Bonneville, not too far from here. The applicant at the April meeting had submitted a site plan that staff had some concerns about primarily on the setback and the allotment of parking. The applicant has submitted a revised site plan and there are still some concerns remaining from staff regarding the site plan, again regarding the parking and the setback in addition to the use of the alley just to the north. They proposed buildings the city does not encourage using, the usage of the alley to access the parking lot just for safety and maintenance concerns. So with that being said, staff would again ask for the continuation of this item to the June 20 Planning Commission meeting. The particulars of the concerns for the parking deal with the availability of free-on-street parking in the surrounding area, namely on Bonneville on Fourth Avenue and the private Rite Aid parking lot, although it's used publicly for many of the city, or all of the city events and for general customers in the downtown area. And I'd also like to remind the Commission of ongoing work and the soon-to-start construction of the Farmers Market Pavilion, just two blocks south of where this site is. There's going to be a new Farmers Market Pavilion and then a new Peanuts Park and then a Revolite Streetscape in connection with the Lewis Street Overpass. And there's a really good opportunity for us to open up and create another anchor on the north side of downtown that this annex and the museum could be a big part of and set a great example for new infill opportunities in the downtown area. So with that, the extra month would allow us some more time to work with the applicant and the designer to come up with hopefully one more and one last site plan that will be a little bit more compatible for the museum now and for what the city hopes to expect the downtown area for the next few decades. The applicant is here if you have any additional questions of them as well.
Thank you, that was pretty comprehensive. Are there any questions from Commissioners at this point? Go ahead, Commissioner.
One quick question, I recall previously there was a question about power access. I was wondering if that had been resolved? I think something about access to Franklin PUD, have those sorts of things been resolved at this point?
I believe so. I think as this moves forward, if there is a continued issue with power access, then that would have to be mitigated or solved.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
So I'm seeing two site plans up there. One is the same that we have in our handouts and then it appears there's another up there that, in which the master garden area is much reduced.
Yeah, that's probably the, so this is the recent, the one that's on the big TV here is the recent site plan. The other one you're looking at, this is the first one. So there's been some changes to bring the building up a little bit closer, but now with the parking being accessed strictly through the alley, the city obviously would not be in favor of that. And again, we'd like to see the building move a little bit closer to the sidewalk to meet the, the central business district, which is immediately to the south of Bonneville, doesn't have a requirement on setbacks or parking, so we'd like those buildings facing the downtown area to have similar design standards as well.
And are you comfortable with that expanded master garden area?
I think so in general, but knowing that this is going to be revised again, I think it depends on what the next one comes looking like.
Thank you. Jacob, would you mind just pointing with the mouse if you have access to what the alleyway is on this revised, where the alleyway is on this revised?
Right where the cursor's at, that's where the alley is.
Okay.
It'd be accessing the parking lot on the north side off of Fourth Avenue where the cursor's at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other further questions or clarifications right now before we open it up to the public hearing? No, I see none. So what we'd like to do is have the applicant come forward to the podium, please, if you'd state your name and your address for the record, that would be great. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Richard Shireman. I'm the Director of the Franklin County Museum and I'm at 2685 Torrey Pines Way in Richland. Grateful again for the consideration and reconsideration. As Planner Jacob shared, we're growing and evolving in this process. We are advocates of reducing asphalt and expanding green space to have a very kid and family-friendly experience at the museum. And to the extent that we can undertake that with our revisions, we are pleased to do so. And therefore, this has been an evolving series of drawings, as you can see, as this is moving closer to Bonneville with the annex and gives us some helpful possibilities again for how to do some things that relate to more living history experience that we would like to see again as an activity-based, family-friendly area for the museum. So that's where it stands and we look forward to being in further touch with the Planners to present that to you at our earliest convenience.
Thank you. Are there any Commissioners that have questions for the applicant at this time? Did you have a chance to look over the approval conditions for this, in this evening's packet? I was particularly looking at number three, the parking maximum of 14 vehicles. Had you had a chance to discuss that with the Planners?
Yes, yes, we have. You know, our position on that, first of all, we understand codes and we're willing to do whatever it takes to allow the process to move along. As was pointed out earlier, there is an abundance of parking in this vicinity, on both sides of Bonneville, on the enormous Rite Aid across and also on Fourth. And so, as I opened by saying, as a general principle, the less asphalt and more landscaping green space we can have parked like sitting around the museum, we think would greatly enhance this area and add to the overall beautification of the downtown area. And so if 14 is, you know, what is recommended, we're willing to make that work. We're asking for consideration that given these other circumstances, that it would enhance the property and the community feeling there if we could even reduce it beyond that, given the fact that all of this does presently exist in that area and knowing the kinds of traffic patterns we already have there with parking not being the least of a problem.
Well, thank you for answering that. And just out of curiosity, because this is the first where we've seen the master garden area so prominent, is this going to be something that the museum and its employees are going to upkeep or is this done in partnership with the WSU Extension Office? What, can you speak to that a bit, please?
Yeah, this is, my communications on this have been with Bill Dixon of the Master Gardeners Group from WSU. We're very interested in partnering with them for heritage crops, demonstration sites that we could work with kids but make this available as the Master Gardeners do to low-income families in the area. But we want it to be a teaching and learning experience as well. And it's a great interest of mine working in the realm of promoting appreciation for regional agriculture as a living history kind of experience. And I wouldn't pretend to think that entire area is going to be vegetable plots. We already have heritage garden, heritage crop plants right behind, between where the, just below where the M is, an existing museum, which are of great interest to people of all ages, but we've had kids doing the planning, we're going to have kids doing the harvesting. And if you're acquainted with the living history museum concept, it's a very dynamic thing. So whether it's the Mount Vernon Living History Farm, or they're not so popular or widespread out here in the Northwest, we don't have many like that, but Fort Nusqually has a living history farm. And I've worked personally with a lot of those organizations, the National Arboretum in Washington DC, so that it's both educational and functional. And again, can be done in a very attractive way and therefore the more space available to us for those purposes would really enhance what we intend to do with the museum addition. We've been in touch with the Ag Hall of Fame, which was originally Franklin County idea about expanding that as an exhibit area that would also be very interactive and something outside the glass and the walls as well as inside. And so that's why we're jealous of space to be able to do that in.
Well, I appreciate that information, that's wonderful. I admire that objective that the museum has to promote that for children and learning area. There's another approval condition and I was just curious about it. It says, number two, no outdoor storage of equipment or materials. Where do you currently keep things that need to be stored and are not currently on exhibit? Where is that held at?
We have two large trailer units where it is indicated there, the dock ramp area, those are side-by-side provided to us by BDI. We also have a small shed where the existing gravel parking is located. And we are the chief tenant in the basement of the police station, not by choice but by their beneficence because we have substantial collections that have simply run out of space. And so we're spread all over the place and we just inherited the Washington State Heritage Railway Archive, which is a massive collection. And thus, we're really seeking to solve all these needs by this very endeavor.
Great, well, thank you for that information. Anybody else want to ask any questions? I'm the only one. I wasn't here last month, so I may be asking things that already got asked last month.
Happy to share. We're at risk of losing some of these things because other people in our state are interested in these materials and we're happy for their interest. But things like the Railway Heritage Archive and objects associated with that in Pasco and our agricultural heritage, we'd really like to keep here. And some of this will require working again with open area like the Master Gardeners to make it user-friendly and family-friendly.
Well, thank you. And we might have you stick around in case there's any other questions, but thank you for your presentation.
Okay, thanks so much.
Any other further discussion on this item? We're just doing a continuation, I believe, so I'll entertain a motion for continuation.
I move to continue the public hearing for the special permit on the proposed location of an annex building for the Franklin County Museum in the R3 medium-density residential zoning district to the June 20, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner J Campos and it passed unanimously. So we'll see this again next month or differ out? June 20th? Got it.
Just a question on process, would this be a hearing examiner, a hearing later or it would stay with the Commission? Yeah, okay.
Good question. Okay, so on to our next item, which is B, code amendment for minimum lot sizes, Master File CA 2017-009. And this is also continued from a previous meeting, so I'll hand it over to staff for any further information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not much has changed since you all have last seen this item. When we discussed this in March, the Planning Commission seemed to agree that we should leave the R1 zoning district alone and focus on R2, R3 and R4. So as you can see in Table 4, I've updated it. So those are the proposed revisions. Lots in the R1 zone will remain at 7,200 square feet in size and 60 feet of road frontage. Staff is comfortable with the revisions and we've taken into account the code amendments that Mr. Gonzalez is working on in regards to the PUDs and the shared street frontage revisions to the code to see if there were any contradictions and we've been pretty thorough, so all looks good. So with that, I'd like to know if the Planning Commission thinks that the proposed revisions are good to go, you know, good to be decided on, or if more discussion is necessary. In that case, we can certainly bring it back next month.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other feedback? So we're looking at Table 4, which is highlighted. And anything else? We've talked about this a few times, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure. Yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to say that back in March, I had raised the question about urgency of these kinds of provisions. And in speaking with staff and also my own experiences, I was driving down Burns Road not that long ago and just seeing all of the developments that are along the way, all the way to the river. It's really evident that we need as many tools as we can to balance growth. And I want to commend... evident that we need as many tools as we can to, to balance growth. And I want to commend staff for their work and say that I'm, I'm very supportive. And thanks for giving us these tools, and for being patient for those who are sometimes slow learners. And I'm, I'm in full support of option one, it looks like.
Thank you. Any other input? Yes?
So, I agree. I'm liking what I'm seeing. I just had a question. I noticed in Richland that for their R, R2S and R3, I noticed that their minimum lot frontage goes down to 42 feet, and ours is 50. Can you talk about why it is that they are at a reduced square footage than we are?
Honestly, I haven't dug into why they have such smaller lots, well, lot sizes and lot frontage. I don't, I mean, when you go through their code, it doesn't say why it's like that. It just says that it is like that. I think 42 is kind of a, an odd number. As, as I stated in, in this memo, we, when we plotted Pasco 100 years ago, they were all broken up into 25-foot lots. So, you know, it, it would make it easier to go, you know, 50-foot wide lots rather than 42. I, I don't know where 42 comes from. I'm sure there's a reason, but I just haven't dug into it.
So, one, thank you, Commissioner Bowers, for that. And I'm glad you said it, because it just made me think of something. One of the concerns from staff is that we would be, we would end up with, we didn't simultaneously change minimum lot frontage and minimum lot sizes, that we would have odd-shaped lots.
Right, long and skinny.
So, should there be an adjustment with the R4 to reflect that, to maybe a, a smaller minimum lot frontage?
So those numbers have been reduced already. So this 4,000 that you see in the high-density R4, that's down from 4,500.
Right. And so I'm, I'm just thinking about it as for R2 and R3, they have the minimum lot frontage of 50 feet. And then, looking at the R4, it's, even though the lot size has gone down, the frontage has stayed the same.
So the frontage for all of these, right now, is 60. So, we're changing all of these proportionally.
I guess I'm suggesting that we bring it down from 50.
In, in the R4?
R4, yes.
Well, we haven't discussed that. We can definitely take a look at it. I don't know what we would reduce it to.
Does 50, is 50 a standard for a specific reason? Like, do developers, do current standards of building, of driveways, of sidewalk gutter, is that, is there a reason behind that 50 versus something else, I guess, is what, what would be helpful to know?
So, certainly if you decrease the frontage, it does make for smaller driveways. A driveway has to be, it, it can't exceed 50% of the frontage. So when you reduce the frontage, you also reduce the size that a driveway can be. That would be one concern. I don't know if it would be enough of a concern. But I'm just thinking back to that, you know, how, how we've got so many 50-foot lots as it is. I guess I just don't see really a necessity to go any lower than that. I don't know if Rick has anything to say about it.
I think that what may happen inadvertently is you'll have a standard that doesn't fit well in the older parts of Pasco because of the 25-foot lot thing that was established 100, 100 years ago, or, or more now. But what I would at least suggest is, we give this a try. The, these numbers seem to resonate with the development community. And so, code amendments, Planning Commission can, can revisit or consider at any time. There's no, you know, prohibition against doing this, this month, next year.
That's good to know.
So, we might give it a try. And then, it's typical for a two-car garage to be 25 feet wide. So, right off the bat, you're at 50% of that 50-foot frontage. So if it was less, it might be, you might end up with Y-shaped concrete aprons that lead to 25-foot wide garages. And, you know, I don't know if it looks funny, but it would look different than what we see now.
Right. And in Richland, looking at theirs, are those medium-density, small, probably like the alphabet home sizes? Are those those lots?
That's my guess. That 42-foot number.
That era is probably carports versus garages, so you didn't have to worry about that same sort of aesthetic from curb to garage.
That's my guess. I, I just don't know what happened in the 40s, when the alphabet homes were laid out. But my, it, it's probably likely that that is exactly what happened. They had a certain home that fit on a certain lot, and 42 feet met whatever need they had, and they just did it. It was a government-planned town, and there was a lot of efficiency in mass production, so.
And I'd like to add that during that time, workers who lived there were not encouraged to have cars. They had a very good bus transit system, and they had local neighborhood stores, and everybody either walked or took the bus. And so there was no need for a garage. Most of those houses, if they have a garage or a carport, it's been added on later.
Thank you for that background. Okay, well, thanks for humoring my hypothetical there. Any other further comments, or is everybody satisfied with option one? Looks like a yes, Darcy. So, would you entertain a motion?
I move to close the hearing on the proposed code amendment. And I think that's set June 20th, 2019, as the date for deliberations and the development of a recommendation for the City Council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? So let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner Myram, and the motion passed unanimously. So we'll see this on June 20th. Anything else in regards to this item?
We do not have anything else.
Okay, thank you. Going right to Item C, code amendment for shared street frontages, Master File CA 2018-008, and I believe that was yours, Jacob, your item, that you are going to reintroduce us, which we've seen before, too?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. So the shared street frontages code amendment is brought back to you. We've seen it in various iterations over the past few months, and we're happy to bring back one that's much more refined, that's included some collaboration and consideration from various city staff and departments, including fire and engineering, to get this nailed down pretty good here. So the, the reasoning for this would, to allow for infill opportunities to occur throughout the city, but mainly in areas that are, because of the lot shapes, are not able to develop with the current code that requires public frontage. So allowing a, a private frontage or a shared street would allow them via a driveway or accessway to develop or redevelop their, their lots for additional housing units. So this would be a new code under Title 21. And we've included some provisions and criteria for which this would apply. Obviously, this would be used for an infill tool, and not for brand-new developments occurring in, for instance, the new, you know, areas beyond the current UGA and into the proposed UGA, but mainly within areas within the city would be, where this would be able to provide some opportunities for infill and housing.
Was that written into the code, that intent that you just spoke of?
I believe so. If not, it was mentioned throughout the, if you look under Bullet Point 2, or Restrictions and Standards, it still points out that the city's preferred standard is already identified. So if there's an opportunity to do it the way the city wants it to be done, then that will be the go-to standard. In cases where due to topography or lot shape, or whatever it may be, make it so that the lot cannot develop, this tool would be able to be used for that instance, and that instance only. It's allowed, I don't know if you want me to go through all the bullet points, but I can definitely highlight a few of the major ones here. Obviously, allowed only in residential areas where the construction of a public street would prevent the achievement of the minimum residential density of the underlying zone designation. Permitted only where due to geometric, topographic, or other physical features, in proportion to the size of the development, would be impractical to extend a publicly dedicated street. So that handles kind of the natural environment becoming an impact for a lot to be developed. It's got, it must go through the current subdivision process identified in Title 21. We've got a limit so that we don't want 20 of these to be stacked behind each other. So there's a limit of up to three adjoining lots. And later on, in the document, you'll see a graphic and a table that show what that could look like, at least on paper. There's obviously some criteria with regards to fire and emergency access. So if the accessway is 150 feet or greater, they must have approved turnaround apparatus space for fire and emergency vehicles to get in and out appropriately and safely. The parking is permitted. It must have a maintenance agreement signed and documented before a certificate of occupancy is issued, so that it's maintained by either a homeowners group, or the property owners, or some combination of that sort. There must be efforts made to, for stormwater and drainage, those need to be taken care of, and signage as well. So we, and try to make sure that we've covered enough here to allow for this to occur, but only in places where it should occur. We're trying to be careful with this. As, as Rick stated at the last item, we're hopeful that this will be a, a good experience for us and developers and folks that would like to redevelop. But if we begin to notice some inconsistencies, or a challenge, or an issue of sorts, obviously, we would bring that back to your attention, so we can mitigate that as soon as possible. There's a table, and then a series of graphics that show and describe what the minimum frontage would be required, along with the pavement and easement requirements, depending on the kind of development that could occur behind a, a housing unit of sorts. So you've got one here where a single-family dwelling unit with one lot placed behind an existing. So you can kind of see where the flag lot term comes from, where the pole is that shared accessway, and then the flag on the top. So this would be an example of one lot being built. The next one would be in another adjoining lot. So the requirements expand, depending on the units. It's kind of proportional.
This is currently happening on Road 68, near Court, by, what's it called? It's like Max Garden, across 68 from there. There's a cul-de-sac that just developed similar to this with homes.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
Are you familiar with it? Yeah.
To be, yeah.
With private, with private street frontage?
Um, well, yeah, it's just, I think they subdivided and they're, they sold it off because it was just pasture land.
Hmm.
Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Something for us to look into, for sure. At least this will present an opportunity for us to allow it, but then officially regulate it as appropriate. So that would be the case here. So this example has the two single-family dwelling units behind the, the parent unit. The next example would be the maximum. And then the last example would be with the, a duplex placed in the back. Now, we've seen other examples, mainly in Oregon, where they allow even more density to occur. But because this is new to us, we want to be sure we're taking some incremental steps here to see if this works. And then if it does work, we can take another step at it later on. The, this, again, is another opportunity for some infill development in the city to meet our housing target and goals as we continue to grow. So I don't know if there's any questions. You have a staff, but please feel free to ask.
Commissioner Bowers, did you have a question that you wanted to ask?
I did, but you just clarified.
Okay. Commissioner Myram?
Yeah, thank you very much. In regards to the emergency access turnaround, so that, that would be at the end of the, the private drive there. What would that resemble? Would that be almost like a cul-de-sac kind of thing for a complete turnaround?
Yep. Fire and our code enforcement staff have definitely made sure that the cul-de-sac is a preferred turnaround method used here.
Do you know what the dimensions are of that, off the top of your head, or?
I believe it's a 60-foot radius requirement for a cul-de-sac.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Good questions. Anybody else? I think it looks pretty great, and it's pretty detailed. Oh, Commissioner Bowers has something.
So I'm actually looking at the multiple dwellings option, the last one laid out. I think you know that several of us on the commission are really excited about all these tools that we're creating to increase this population growth we're going to have in Franklin County. That looks really, really dense. But I'm noticing that on the, on the table, it's paired next to, I think it is, is the first of the, it's, it's similar to the one with the two lots with flag, adjacent flags, in terms of the minimum, minimum pavement width and easement width. Does that, I'm just, it just seems like, I mean, if you're going to have two duplexes, I mean, duplex with like two families living there?
Yeah, and so that would be the 12-foot for each lot, so it would be 24 feet, whereas on the one, I think you were saying the, the.
Yeah.
Lot, the one lot, the minimum frontage would be 12 feet. On the duplex, on the bottom of the table, that would require 24, because it's 12 per lot being, being built. And these are higher than the examples I saw in Oregon. So I wanted to be a little bit conservative with that and be careful, because again, this is the first time we, we're doing this here. What is interesting, the example you bring up, Chairwoman, is, is that you will see these in a lot of cities, especially in the Puget Sound, but you will not find them in their code. And so they're being allowed somehow through some mechanism, but they're not really codifying them. So rather than have this happen without anybody's knowledge, we hope to regulate this as efficiently as possible, to make sure it's done at least in a safe manner. And there's some considerations being done here. And I'll also note, with regards to the density, they still must meet the density requirements, or cannot exceed whatever the underlying zone is. So they can't overbuild or overdensify a lot, or I'm sorry, a lot in a zone that would not allow it in any other type of development.
Thank you. That's helpful to know. Anything else come to mind for commissioners? Looks like you put in a lot of work on this, for sure.
A lot of staff time. Yeah, the staff was very helpful on this one.
Thank you for this.
Do you entertain a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
I move to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendments.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Myram, seconded by Commissioner A. Compost, and it passed unanimously. Oh, wait, we got a second motion.
Second motion.
Damn it. I, I wanted to zip through. Sorry, guys.
I further move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council, recommended the City Council the adoption of the proposed code amendments for shared street frontages as contained in the May 16th, 2019 Planning Commission staff report.
Okay, thanks for staying consistent on that for me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Myram, seconded by Commissioner A. Compost, and it passed unanimously. Anything else we need to know, or it's, that's it? Goes to City Council?
June 10th workshop.
Okay. Thank you. And then we'll move right along to our last public hearing item, which is D, code amendment. Lots of code amendments today regarding special permits for auto wrecking Master File CA 2019-008. Regarding special permits for auto wrecking master file CA 2019-008. And I want to just notify commissioners, there was also something on the bench, an email. I hope you had a chance to look at it. It was pretty short, looked like this. And staff, Jacob, is this yours? We'll hand this over to staff for the code amendment.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. Again, this is, this was brought to you at the last meeting as an informational item, and you requested to do a public hearing, so here we are. The applicant has requested to amend the special permits chapter of the municipal code to add a unclassified use to allow for auto wrecking yards, automobile wrecking yards, automobile wrecking yards as an unclassified use to the PMC. Special permits, our applications are required to undergo additional review by city staff, planning commission, and council to allow for the consideration of mitigation measures to reduce or eliminate impacts to surrounding neighborhoods and uses. There are currently 12 unclassified uses. This would be, if approved, would be the 13th. There's a table included within the staff report that identifies where the proposed code amendment could be applicable within the zoning districts due to the languages throughout the municipal code. So if this were approved, it would still not be permitted in the C1 or C2 zones. It would be permitted through a special or conditional use permit in the C through, C3 zone, as well as the Business Park BP zoning district. It would be required through special permit and conditional use permit in the I1 zone, and it is already permitted in the I2 and I3 zones, our heavy industrial zones in the city. So I stated, the zoning code currently allows for the automobile wrecking yards to, to be developed in the I2 and I3 zones, and through the approval of a special permit in the other zoning districts as well. There's a map attached, and it's a little difficult to see, and I don't want to be misleading here, because a lot of that land that's shaded in that blue hash mark obviously would not be able to be used for this, the airport, the Port of Pasco areas, and so forth. But this does show you to the extent of the zoning districts that could potentially be impacted if, if, if there was an opportunity for someone to use the unclassified use to, to do an automobile wrecking yard there. While the approval of the code would allow for a new or currently operating business to expand, and obviously, that's a great thing for the city and the business community, because it's already allowed in the I2 and I3 zones, the city staff would recommend not approving the code amendment based on that provision. The applicant is here. We, to answer any questions from the commission, or if the commission has any questions for staff.
So can commissioners hold off on questions for staff until we're done? All right, so let's have the applicant come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record, and good evening.
Good evening, I'm Dwight Hume, and I have office in Spokane at 9101 North Mountain View Lane, Spokane, Spokane 99218. Yes, I am here on behalf of my client, who does have an auto wrecking yard, that it has been historically under code enforcement, because half of it has non-conforming rights, the other half, all of which became C3, once was industrial, and then it became C3, and therefore, the non-conforming aspect of it. And then, code enforcement has provided a letter to these folks that their operation can exist within the non-conforming north half, if you will. But the cars would be allowed to be stored within the C3 portion that doesn't have wrecking yard rights, and that any operation to disassemble those vehicles would have to be moved into the north half to allow that. I think I mentioned the last time we visited, these type of land uses don't just disappear. And this one would have no reason to disappear. It would just have to operate in a very awkward manner that I just described. Looking for a zoning tool that would give a benefit back to everyone. One, of course, to the owner, so that they could have legal rights to the full site. And then also, a, an improvement in terms of buffering and coexistence with now what has happened in that area. Long after the wrecking yard was established, you now have residential moving in, and existing literally across the fence. The opportunity to have a hearing, and to review the land use to certain standards that currently don't have to be met, would, would enhance, I think, the coexistence of these, of this use against the residential. Again, just keeping in mind that it's an allowed use, and it has an awkward provision supported by the city that says they can have their vehicles stored out there. And the reason I think that says that is because the C3 zone has a list of uses, and you're familiar with them, but you can have trucking, express, and storage yards. You can have heavy machinery sales and service. You can have automobile sales and service. Mobile home and trailer sales and service, and all of those things are outdoor bulk storage and or display. So why couldn't you have those cars stored there? To be moved into the north half of the property, to be disassembled. I don't want to get into all of those issues, and yet, the letter or email that you received is from, obviously, a competitor who has taken it upon himself to try to put the business out of operation. That opportunity, that letter, and those issues should be considered by the hearing examiner, or by the planning commission at a public hearing, not as an issue in conjunction with a generic language of the zoning code that you're adding in. Had nothing to do with us at this point in time. So, again, it's a zoning tool. It should be, if added into the code. I presume that in the future, as a conditional use permit, it would be heard by your hearing examiner. That saves you the burden of hot topic issues that might come up. It also puts it in the hands of the examiner, who is schooled with the legal aspects of land use regulations, and also, then into the hands of the council, or to court. Usually, it just goes straight to court. So, while it seems to be a minor issue in terms of a tweak to the zoning code, staff suggests that while we already have it in the industrial zone, that's not the point. The point is, we have a particular automobile wrecking operation that has now been stained, if you will, with the downzoning from industrial down to C3. It respects those non-conforming rights in the north half, but it doesn't allow anything further, other than the fact that we can visually have everything that's out there. I envision that with the approval of this amendment, it'll give an opportunity to actually consider it on a public input basis, public hearing, and appropriate conditions attached to actually improve upon the buffering and screening and so on. Right now, that isn't going to happen, and keep in mind, it's not going to go away. The other aspect that is, I think, worthy of consideration is that even though you have that in the code, it doesn't mean it's going to happen just because it's in there in other locations. If you look at the other 12 items, they're appropriately listed because they have the potential due to their location or demand. But a wrecking yard isn't something that is going to be just advocated. First of all, the business model doesn't really allow them to be a five-acre wrecking yard anymore. That was something of the past in Spokane County that I'm most familiar with. They're just nonexistent anymore. So they're not going to happen. But it gives you, and the landowner of the property, an opportunity to clean things up and, and control what's going on there. I would hope you would consider it, and give it an approval, and recommend approval. And I know the council had to hear it, and I know there will be a public hearing at that level as well, but I'd like to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hume at this time?
I'm just trying to figure out the situation that you're talking about, where half of the site is, it's not permitted on the northern, northern half of the site? Is it across the street?
No, no, it's, it's all adjoining property.
Oh, okay.
I can, I can kind of show you.
Is it on Oregon?
No. What is the name of the street that we're on, Rick? Anyway. What street are we on, Jacob?
I think the site specific is A Street, although this is not a site-specific item.
Right. Right, this is a code amendment item.
Right, and so this is, this is the street. You have the non-conforming right to that, and you don't have those non-conforming rights down here, but you can have the cars down there, so.
Thank you.
That's, that's the way it works.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, so stick around. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this item? Now would be the time to come forward. Doesn't look like we have any takers for that, so. Let's see. Going once? Oh, we have Commissioner Myram, yes.
I had some comments for staff, but I guess that could be, should that be within the hearing?
No, that's a good time to do it, right now.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was among some of the commissioners that were interested in seeing if, I agree, this is a very kind of thorny, thorny issue. I was hoping that we could maybe address this issue within the special conditional permit process. But I agree with staff that this is not optimal, particularly opening up to, to new activities, particularly in the C3 zone, that could be very heavily industrial. And those are in close proximity to some residential neighborhoods. I think long-term, it would not be an optimal solution. So I guess I'm wondering, is there, is there any possible way within the conditional use permit process that non-conforming use expansion specifically can be addressed on, on a case-by-case basis? Where, where that can be conditionally set up? Because I, I don't feel that this is really addressing the, the needs of this particular case, and it's opening the city up to a lot of other development that it's not necessarily wanting in all, all of those districts. I'm just wondering if there's a new tool that, that would be helpful, but, but within some very tight parameters.
I, I don't remember all of the details, but in late 2018, and I think in January or February of this year, we did try a similar solution through the expansion of a non-conforming use that, that went through a very similar process as this. And then, the request for that was withdrawn by the applicant to pursue this avenue instead.
And the, the commission at that point didn't seem to have a lot of excitement for the non-conforming use aspect of fixing this, or accommodating this, let's say.
Is it possible for an applicant to request a rezone of a lot of this size? I know it's, might be considered, I don't know if the term's spot zoning, or... What's the lay of the land there if, if a rezone's requested?
Rezones, of course, can be requested. In this case, and in many cases, it may need to be accompanied by a comprehensive plan amendment, which is, in, in this case, and in many, many cases, is a one, an annual event. So first, the comp plan amendment, if it's deemed appropriate, then the particular, because comp, remember, the comprehensive plan allows a range of zonings within a particular land use designation. So if it were changed to industrial, then later, assuming it were approved, the rezone application for industrial 1, 2, or 3 would be received, and you'd, you'd go from there.
That's a good question. Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
So, the reason that staff is opposing this addition to unclassified uses is because of the proximity to residential? Is that why?
Not, not specifically, no. The, the main reason is because the use is already allowed in, in a few of the already existing zoning districts, I2 and I3. And in our zoning code, there's many references with, that were stated in the staff report, C3 and a few others, Business Park, where unclassified uses are a permitted use. And so this would then be included as an unclassified use. And whether that's actually used or not, who knows? It may never be used, but it could be used, and we'd be allowing it. If this item was added as an unclassified use anywhere else in the zoning code unless specifically stated, it's not allowed, but still allows unclassified uses, this could be a potential, a potential use. It's a little tricky wordplay of sorts, but a lot of digging in the PMC for this one.
Thank you for that clarification. What would staff, in this particular case, because I see the, the importance of keeping our unclassified uses very specific, and not just opening them up to anything, what would, in this case, of this auto wrecking company, would you recommend that they do to resolve the issue, and, and to be able to use their northern side of the property that is going unused?
Yeah. Well, we can't, we can't answer that. I, I don't know what we would recommend. I don't know if we should recommend anything.
Okay.
I think a succinct question the commission needs to address is, are you comfortable with wrecking yards in C3 zones?
Right, and the answer most likely, my guess, is going to be no. Just looking at faces, and, and based off of that 2018, now that you brought it up, I recall that was a conditional use permit for, yeah.
I, I wish I had a better handle on the history of that part of Pasco. And that, actually, I think it's on Lewis Street, now that I'm thinking about it.
Right, this is really difficult to parse through, because we're not talking about a specific... We're talking about just code amendment. I'm trying to stick, stay away from going off and talking about the particulars about this specific person's business, but...
Well, but, well, but it's important, I mean, the, and, and I'm making some assumptions here with, with this little story, but there was a, definitely an auto wrecking yard use in that, in this location at one point in time that was legal. And now, what happened to the zoning back in the day, I just don't know. I suspect, and you've heard me say this before, we have to give the benefit of the doubt to the people that made the kinds of zoning decisions they made in the past, that they knew what they were doing. So at one point, at some point, it changed from industrial to something else, in this case, C3, I guess. Why, I'm not sure. But we had to, we have to assume that council knew what they were doing. And I, I recognize that is going to, non-conforming uses are not a good place to be if you're in a business, or if you're in a house that's non-conforming, or even if you have a house that's sound, in a commercial zone, you have issues. Real issues with banks, insurance, it's, it's just not a good place to be. But, at the same time... But at the same time, our laws allow for the uses to continue until they disappear for a period of time. I think it's 12 months. So I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I can describe the history of what happened on East Lewis, but at some point, it became a legal non-conforming use.
Okay, so I guess where that brings the commission is if, this is the time to have any further questions answered about this code amendment proposal or discussion, and then close the public hearing and make a decision. So go ahead, Commissioner Compos.
So this is one of those things that I'm really excited to have a hearing examiner, you know, kind of take, because I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable listening to staff's recommendation about not denying, or about not approving this, but ultimately, I think this is something that a hearing examiner needs to make the decision on.
Is it possible for us to continue this to next month and allow the hearing examiner to?
No, the hearing examiner won't be hearing code amendments.
And code amendments will still be under the purview of the planning commission.
So it seems unfortunate that this company would have to go, jump through the hoops that it has to jump through right now because of this non-conforming use. That being said, I don't know that I'm in favor of adding this to our list of unclassified uses.
I'm in agreement with you.
Yeah, I'm in agreement too. Although it might relieve this particular circumstance, it just opens the door to development that, that may not be ideal in this particular neighborhood, so, yeah, I wouldn't be in favor either.
Are there any other commissioners who want to make their opinion on this?
I, I agree with everyone else. I think we're all in this, you know, kind of, it's hard, I mean, our kind of goes to the, the business that is in this predicament, but that's not what we're deciding here. We're deciding code amendment, and I don't think we want to open up to that, so I agree to deny it.
Thank you. Said very well. So I'm going to, anybody else want to speak to that, or, or I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing? I need to do the going once, going twice, going three times, and there's my gavel, and now I'd entertain that motion.
I move to close the hearing on the proposed code amendments.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, so the record show it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner A. Compos, and it passed unanimously, and now option one or two.
I move to deny the proposed code amendment to the Pasco municipal code and not allow for the addition of automobile wrecking yards as an unclassified use as defined in PMC 25-200-020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Bowers, seconded by Commissioner A. Compos, and the motion passed unanimously. So anything else further that we need to know about this?
No, that's everything. Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the end of our items on the public hearing. Let me get back to my agenda. And now we're on to workshop, item A, code amendment to increase dwelling height in R3 and R4 zones, master file CA 2019-009.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another code amendment. We've been talking a lot about Pasco's forecasted growth and how to accommodate that in the limited space that we have in the UGA. Therefore, staff believes increasing the maximum dwelling height in the R3 and R4 zoning districts could help accommodate that growth. We're only considering the R3 and the R4 zoning districts, which have a maximum dwelling height of 35 feet. And we don't measure the dwelling height to the peak of the roof, at least not in the PMC. We measure dwelling height to the midpoint of the highest roof surface, and I did include a little, a little picture in the memo to show what that is. It's, is essentially if you go to the top of the wall, top of the highest wall, and then halfway up the gable, that's where we measure that 35 feet to. So in the R3 zone, we propose for a greater dwelling height up to 45, or sorry, 40 feet to that midpoint with special permit approval. And in the R4 zone, we'd allow 40 feet to the midpoint outright. So that would result in a 45 or 46-foot tall building to the peak. Right now, it's about 40 feet to the peak is what we're seeing in, in buildings. And additionally, in the R4 zone, a greater height could be achieved through special permit. Both Kennewick and Richland practice similar provisions, and we've also spoken with the fire marshal, you know, to, to see if there were any conflicting codes that might conflict with the IBC, and there hasn't been. Just as long as the buildings conform with the IBC, then we're, you know, we'll be fine, which they will. So I haven't created a draft ordinance yet because I wanted to get everyone's input first. So are there any questions or any, any issues that any, anyone foresees?
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
Once again, I'm grateful for these additional tools to try and solve our population challenges. I have lived in a number of places where McMansionization has gone on. I'm assuming those are mostly similar to our, our, our one zones, but I just have a concern that all of a sudden you're going to get like one, because someone wants to expand, they're going to go up with everything around them not going up. So that's one of my concerns I'd like you to speak to. And then my other question is, how high is the water tower next to the fire station and the library on, what is that, 72? Oh, okay. All right, great. Because my other concern, thank you, is that I know in a lot of cities in the 60s, they decided, and this is not comparable to that, but they decided to start putting these La Corbousier, like really tall apartment buildings, and, and now they stick out like eyesores in areas where that didn't happen. So I know it's only an additional five feet, so we're not talking that, but I'm all for apartment buildings, but I am just really, I think we've got to be really careful.
If I could ask staff to go back to the map that has the, all the zones on it and point out which zones this would be changing in if this was adopted?
So this is going to be R3 and R4, so, oh, what is it on there? It's the darker, it's the orange, and you can't really see it. I mean, really.
And I'm just trying to illustrate that it's actually very small portions of the city that this would be affecting.
Right.
It looks like at the end of Road 68, I see an R3, R4.
Yeah, it is. We, we can have a better map when this comes back to the commission.
I recall in our discussions about comprehensive plan updates and what ratio of housing was higher density, this was a few months ago, so may have changed since then, but was 16% of our housing was what I recall, which is not, I mean, it's not that much, but. I was going to say it seemed 40 feet seems conservative. What would we get as far as vertically, like another story of?
It would, it would be another story, so four stories is about what we would get.
Because here I've seen apartment buildings that have three stories, and that's, that's the max. Okay, so add just an additional story.
But the old three-story height was, kind of came about because you couldn't go any higher unless you used steel. And now you can use wood up until five stories, if I'm not mistaken? I mean, you have to do something on the ground floor, but the technique, the construction techniques are, are more refined now, and you can go higher with just wood. And I think it's five, yeah, five stories.
Okay. Any other questions? Any opinions as to 35 versus 40 versus higher? I, I appreciate Commissioner Bowers's comments. I like that comparable. How high is the water tower? It's good to know.
Yeah, I think 40 feet's a, a great start and provides some parity with surrounding cities, so.
And like you said earlier, this is something we could come back to later as we find out what our needs are as a city in accommodating population, that maybe this needs to be adjusted if we're still bursting at the seams. Okay, all right, so is there, are you just looking for feedback? There's no motion with this?
No, yeah, this is just a workshop item, so no motion is required. I will probably bring this back next month for a hearing. So, and with that, I'll, I'll have the zoning map and, you know, specified areas that point out where the R3 and R4 districts are.
And with that, I guess I have a question. So, I mean, we're just thinking stereotypical apartment buildings, but high density can also mean fourplexes and duplexes. Are those height standards, I mean, with a fourplex, essentially that's four different buildings sharing one lot line?
A fourplex, it, it could be, well, so it could be that, or it could be just four units on one lot.
Okay. Got it. Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
So the housing that CBC built recently, how high up does that go? Oh, I don't know.
It was, whatever the height is in the C1 zone, I think it's 35 feet.
How, so that's three stories still?
Yeah.
I think it's a little higher, okay. Thank you. Well, we will come back to that and go on to other business, which is comprehensive plan update from the city council workshop meeting. And who is giving that to us?
This, this is the presentation that was given to council roughly a month ago, and I just wanted to get this in front of the commission. I'm not going to, I'm not going to take more time than is necessary, but please ask any questions if you have them whenever you, you think of it.
But as way of background, of course, I think the commission's fully aware of all this. Council reviewed, reviewed the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan last year. We proposed an initial urban growth boundary expansion last year of 4,800 acres, and then there were efforts made at that time to integrate the urban growth boundary and the land use designations with other projects staff is working on, including the Broadmoor Subarea Plan, which is another story that I'll get to momentarily if you want to hear that. But at that time, city council direction included these, these bulleted items. Particularly flexibility of the plan and the current challenges involving infill development, as we've been talking about the last three commission meetings in a row now. Land use designation clarification, there were some instances in the comprehensive plan where we had some contradictions. And then policies regarding applicability for particular housing and allowed uses in neighborhoods. And capital facility planning and mitigation, in particular, how our water and sewer, which are 50-year plans, fit in with our proposed urban growth boundary expansion efforts, and then where we were going economically as a city, and that gave rise to a council discussion about the preparation of an economic development plan, which is something that's on our goal list for this year. So you'll probably get a look at that as, as well as the year goes on. So the initial 4,800-acre urban growth boundary expansion was developed to, at that time anyway, accommodate a population increase of 51,000 people. So, so between then and now, we've grown by 2,000 people about, and so now we only have to accommodate 48,000 people. However, it still was kind of a shock to particular state agencies, especially Department of Transportation, and they asked us to take a look and come up with, and you can see here, the, the expansion area, this is Fanning Road at the bottom, and it, it's, it's a ways up there. It also included one square mile of additional industrial land along Highway 395 that's currently designated as industrial in the county. But the state agencies and special, a couple of special interest groups asked us to develop an environmental impact statement so that they could consider a range of alternatives, get a better handle on the land capacity analysis, and provide additional opportunities for public comment. So we did that. We took a look at the original urban growth boundary expansion. We took a look at not doing anything, sticking with our existing urban growth boundary area, and then coming up with a hybrid between the two extremes, the do-nothing and the, and the large development as is occurring now kind of expansion. So we issued scoping notices in fall last year. Scoping notices where you tell, you identify to the public what you're doing, you ask them for comments to make sure that you're addressing in the environmental impact statement whatever people want to see addressed. And so some of those comments were as follows. They wanted to see, or several people and, and commenters wanted to see a higher denser alternative, higher density alternative. They wanted to see additional work related to transportation systems because people seem to be particularly sensitive to, candidly, Road 68 traffic, as if it's really, really, really bad, so we're doing that. There were some comments about critical areas, although if you look at the 4,800-acre expansion area that we originally proposed, there seriously are no critical areas in it. It's mostly farmland, although that was also an issue. And then there were, of course, comments on the availability of industrial lands, our land capacity analysis, water rights, affordable housing, what development of that scope would mean for air quality effects, and then a very detailed comment, comments on the land analysis supply that was accompanied the original 4,800-acre expansion. So if we look at our current land capacity, we can accommodate about 30,000 people, including the Broadmoor area, although that's a little iffy because we're anticipating a higher unit count in Broadmoor, roughly 1,600 acres, than may occur there. We're optimistic on the number of units that may occur in Broadmoor, but we roughly have to accommodate about 18,000 more people in some form or another, either within our existing urban area or expanded urban area. So we came up with these figures for what we need for additional land, roughly 3,600 acres, 3,550, and we developed a, whoops, that's, that's the note, that's, this is our existing urban boundary right here. This was our traditional growth boundary, the 4,800 acres, and then a much lesser alternative three that only involved roughly 3,600 acres. You'll see in this expansion area a few more colors than the typical base yellow, which represents low density. I'll just, just real quickly go back to the original 4,800 acre. This is all expanded urban area, but you'll only see two colors in here, and that's a commercial note here and here, and I forgot the street names that those are on, but the rest is low density. So that's the traditional growth pattern. That's what we do now, roughly. rest is low density. So, that's the traditional growth pattern. That's what we do now. Roughly 90% of our land is low-density, single-family growth. So, in the higher-density alternative three, you'll see a mixed or a medium-density designation, some high-density, and then commercial nodes in those same spots, except they've been expanded a little. And then, you'll also see the traditional single-family zoning surrounding that, which is a typical development pattern or style. You cluster the higher density in close proximity to commercial and services, and then you get less dense as you go from those core areas outward. There's an expanded view of what I just pointed out. Of course, we, it's, it's counterproductive to identify exact locations for parks and schools at this point in time, but they, they need to be in this area roughly in, in those circular areas that the graphic predicts. This is a variation. You'll see basically a phased approach to a 10 and 20-year approach to providing for the population accommodation, and what that really does is provide a tool for capital planning because, remember, our capital systems, our water and sewer, our transportation systems have to be planned at a level that will accommodate the kinds of land use we're predicting. You don't have to identify exact funding, but at a 30,000-foot level, you have to identify funding sources for water, sewer, and you have to show that those plans are not inconsistent with the land use designations. What that boils down to is we have a crying need for a local improvement district for sewer expansion, starting with Broadmoor. And if you've been out on 182 lately, you've seen some work occurring just north of the freeway bridge at, at Harris Farm, essentially. The pipe, or the casing is going under the freeway right now, so that the sewer, the trunk sewer line can be installed in the casing to a point on the north side of Harris Road. And then, private development, we think, at this point, will take it up to roughly a point that meets Sandifer, if Sandifer was extended westward, roughly 600 feet west of Broadmoor Boulevard. But, from there, we have to work with the owners for a local improvement district to take it further north to Burns, and then it goes east from Burns and a, a point that's roughly 600 feet west of Broadmoor Boulevard. We do need a new lift station in the urban boundary. That's a facility that is located in the low points of the area's contours, and it forces sewerage to a point where gravity can take over. And we need a new, a couple new water reservoir systems. Although, this was the timeline in 2018, it's already slipped a little. We have a number of next steps, but this is a revised timeline that, whoops, that has us roughly with a expansion application to the county early summer, which will be what the draft DIS makes a decision on. We're going to, at the same time, process the Department of Commerce 60-day review with a 30-day review that's required for the draft environmental impact statement, and we hope to get it to the Planning Commission in September. So, there's gonna be quite a bit of me droning on and on and on about a lot of things at commission meetings because you'll be getting a lot of information, and, and you'll be asked to provide your input. We actually received a couple, a few days ago, the first drafts of the comprehensive plan goals and policies and supplementing text. I haven't had a chance to go through those yet, but I'm going to this coming week, and we'll get comments back to our consultants, and then you'll probably see it first draft at the June Planning Commission meeting, or, or sometime probably before that. Then, bring it up for questions in June. But, it's, right now, it's just for reading and for you to be jotting notes down so you can inform staff of whatever you're, you're thinking at the time. So, it's a lot of information, but that's what council has also received to date. And then, there'll be, and if, and I want to make sure I remind the Planning Commission, you actually did hold a, a couple of public hearings last year on two requested land use amendments to the comprehensive plan. One of them involved higher-density housing just west of the Moore Mansion, and one of them involved, I might be getting confused here, one of them involved higher density near 20th Avenue and A Street. But, the 20th Avenue and A Street issue has been resolved. We're going to suggest to the commission and to council that higher density be inclu, or R four zoning be included in the mixed residential's, uh, a, a land use designation in the comprehensive plan, which takes that requested amendment off the table. You won't make, need to make a decision on that. You'll only need to make a decision on whether high-density residential should be included in a comprehensive plan category. But, you will need to make a decision and a recommendation on the, gosh, I can't remember the name of the, the applicant's, Miles was the gentleman's name.
Was it Rio Del Sol?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Rio, Rio Del Sol, mhm. They wanted to go from low-density to high-density. So, you'll be, we'll be bringing all that back to you, and then you'll be considering that probably in September, or perhaps October, and then make a recommendation to council.
Thank you so much. We're, we're gonna look forward to your droning. We're gonna smile, and we'll drone along with you. So, if there's nothing else, then, is there anything else? No? No? Okay, then I adjourn this meeting at 8:36?